Good evening and welcome to the Seal Beach Planning Commission meeting of April 6, 2015. The meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the oral call, please?
Chair Sloan.
Here.
Vice Chair Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Pratt.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Machin.
Here.
By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there a need to change the agenda tonight? Since there are no objections, the agenda stands as presented.
You have to abstain.
Mm-hmm.
Did you object? Because it was on the consent calendar. If it's on the consent calendar, he needs to abstain because he wasn't here last time.
We can note that at the time of the consent calendar.
That's the only thing on the consent calendar.
Right. You can just abstain then.
Oh, okay. Just abstain.
That was my practice.
Okay. Do we have to vote on this?
I don't believe so.
No motion is necessary. The agenda has been accepted as presented.
Oh, okay.
We'll move on to oral communications. I'm sorry, Esther, do you have something?
Well, we're still going to have consent calendar, aren't we?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any item, not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes each. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak on a matter that is not on tonight's Seeing none, we will close oral communications and move on to the consent calendar. There's only one item on the consent calendar tonight, as Patty noted, and that is approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 17, 2015. Do I have a motion?
I have a correction. That is, on the first page, it says Commissioners Cummings called the regular meeting to order, but it was Commissioner Sloan that did that.
Why did I miss that?
Other than that, I didn't see anything.
Can you note that change, Tina?
Commissioner Cummings, should we accept that as a motion to approve with the change?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The vote is four in favor, one abstention, I believe.
Correct.
Is that right? The motion passes and the consent calendar is approved. Moving on to the public hearing items, the first item tonight is the conditional use permit 15-2. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chairman.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Chair. I have a conflict of interest in that my business is located directly across the street at 210 and 1/2 Main Street, which falls within the 500-foot rule. So, on the record of the meeting, I recuse myself and will leave the chambers at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Machin. I just ask for a point of clarification. I understand that you have a leasehold interest in that property. Just need to disclose that on the record. Thank you very much.
We'll come get you when we're done with this item.
Thank you, Chairman Sloan and the fellow commissioners. Tonight I will be giving a presentation regarding item two at 209 Main Street, conditional use permit CUP 15-2, to allow an existing restaurant with an outdoor eating area and an existing type 41 beer and wine alcohol license to upgrade to a type 47 on sale general alcohol license. The site is located on the west side of Main Street, in the Woody's Diner, in the Main Street specific plan area. It's in a two-story building with the restaurant being about 2,300 square feet. In June of 1993, the city council approved resolution 4329 for CUP 9223 to serve beer and wine in conjunction with BJ's Restaurant. At that time, the owner participated in the in-lu parking program so that they could obtain that approval. The property is currently still in compliance with the Main Street parking in-lu program. The new owners, Avila's El Ranchito Mexican Restaurant, has 11 other locations within LA County and Orange County, and it's a family-owned restaurant. The reason for the upgrade is to keep it consistent with the other restaurants and to provide a variety of drinks that complement the menu items. A full menu and a drink menu have been placed in your packets. The floor plan is going to be substantially the same. The interior eating area is located right here. It will remain the same. The outdoor eating area is located in this area, with Main Street being, going north and south from this area, with the kitchen back in here and storage and walk-in area back in this location, and the restrooms here. The decor will be changed to match the branding of El Ranchito's other restaurants. The tables will be changed. The bar area back here in the rear will also be changed. The hours of operation for this restaurant are consistent with the Main Street specific plan. They'll typically close at 10 o'clock Sunday through Thursday, and at 11 o'clock on Friday and Saturday. The use is physically adequate and compatible with the existing uses in the Main Street specific area. No comments have been received from the public regarding this matter. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolution 15-7 to approve CUP 15-2 with conditions. And I'm available for any questions. That concludes my presentation.
The only concern that I have, does this place concerns or questions?
Either one.
Okay. My only concern is they have that outdoor eating area, and it's just so easy to just somebody walk by and grab something. I'm not concerned about the proprietors. I'm concerned about people walking by.
The outdoor eating area is consistent with other eateries in the Main Street specific area. They currently serve alcohol at this.
Which ones?
Hennessy's is one of them that's just down the street.
Hennessy have an outdoor eating area?
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't notice that. Okay.
And they currently serve beer and wine at Woody's. And they are in regulation with ABC regulations.
Any other questions?
I had a couple. You said the bar area was going to be removed or remodeled. Is there going to be a bar in this restaurant?
It's going to be located just where it's currently sitting, right back here in this area. So, they will have a counter area where you can eat and order a drink.
But you can order a drink at the tables as well?
Yes. Currently, it's...
So, that is not a bar per se. That is an eating area where drinks are served.
Correct.
That's correct, yes.
Correct.
So, there is no bar as I know it.
Right.
In this restaurant.
Correct. Exactly. It's not as if it's a separate area where you just order drinks. Yes.
Thank you. And the second item I had was, a question I had was, does the Main Street specific plan limit the number of establishments with a type 47 liquor license?
Currently, it does not.
So, it's totally up to the commission and council to honor these requests. There's no specific policy for issuing 47 permits.
That's correct. That's correct. Each of the applications will review through a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
That's a good comment to make because liquor licenses run with the land. So, once you grant it, it never goes away.
Well, to clarify on that point, liquor licenses are issued by the state, by the ABC, and they do not run with the land. They are personal to the licensee. The CUP is a land use regulation.
Okay, the CUP.
And the CUP will run with land. I understood what you're saying. I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Okay.
We understood that. There are two different regulatory processes here. The state runs the licensing of individuals to serve alcohol. The city regulates. This is a matter of land use in terms of where alcohol can be sold. And that's what's before you.
Well, I guess my concern is because when the whole CUP process started some years back, there was a big rush to get the licenses for the restaurants. And at that time, there was a lot of concern that a lot of licenses were being issued. And I think somebody ran the numbers on it and found that we had more liquor licenses per square mile than Compton. And that doesn't, people were not happy with that because we didn't want to get into a situation where we had, well, look at the problems we have on St. Patrick's Day with our four Irish bars. And we just didn't want to have a Main Street that had problems.
Yeah, I'm concerned with that as well. That's one of the reasons I was asking about whether there was a bar in the facility.
The only concern, well, yes, but they already have a beer and wine license. This is just an upgrade. It's not like it's a whole new license. This is an upgrade.
Any other comments? Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to make a comment?
I'm opening a hearing now.
I am. Should I announce that?
Yes, I would think so.
Just one of these for, is it on? So, my name is Elise Avila Smith. I am a third-generation family member of our restaurants. My father is there, his second generation. My grandparents started it. We've been around since 1966. We have, as we said, 11 locations throughout, well, one in LA County and the restaurant in Orange County. I currently run two of our restaurants. And I guess we just want you guys to understand that we are very much a family restaurant. Every single one of our locations is run and owned by a family member. You know, we take great pride in our family's heritage and tradition, and one of the most important things for us is when we do enter a community, we like to get very involved in the community. We think of it as our family, and so we like to participate in the events and support the schools and just really be the local kind of family restaurant in the community. So, we do hope, you know, to be able to be that for you guys if you'll allow us. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
How many restaurants did you say, Han?
We have 11.
11. Do they all serve alcohol?
They do. So, the full 47 liquor license is consistent with our concept in every single one of our restaurants. We really stick to the same business plan for each restaurant.
I see. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question size-wise. How does this compare to your other restaurants?
So, this is consistent with about three of our restaurants. It is on the smaller side, which nowadays we prefer, but it is right, you know, within our parameters of what we feel fits our restaurant plan.
And you will be serving lunch and dinner?
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Oh, breakfast too? Okay, because I didn't see that on the menu.
Yeah, so we do serve breakfast all day long.
Oh, okay.
We do offer that. It may not have been on that menu, but we have a full breakfast menu.
Because, to be honest with you, if you've got a restaurant and you're not doing all three meals, you're losing out these days. You've got to maximize, you know, your floor space. You really do.
I agree. Definitely.
Yeah.
Here it is.
Oh, is that where it is? Okay, I didn't see it.
Any other questions?
We both ran chairs.
I have a question. What's a good time to go? Because you're always full.
Well, just find me. I'll be there 24 hours a day.
Huntington Beach is, when it's free.
2:00.
Popular.
You can find me, and I'll get you in. How about that?
You didn't hear that, did you, Mr. Fowler?
Just a joke.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter?
Just one quick comment. My name is Victor Avila, and I'm Elise's father, obviously. And I'm also in the restaurant business. Your concern regarding where it's going to be a bar, you know, all our restaurants are full service. So, we don't have bars per se. So, it is where someone come in by themselves and sit down and have a full menu. So, we don't really stop anybody from coming in, and we do offer full dinner, lunch, and breakfast menu. And if someone wants to sit down and want the bar, so we don't just, you know, have lists of bar per se, like, you know, want you to think that. That's all. Okay?
Thank you, Victor. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will close public testimony on this item. Any comments from the commission?
Move for approval.
I second.
Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on a second.
Do it again?
Four in favor. Motion passes and the conditional use permit is approved. Congratulations.
Before we move on? If my little speech. Approval of this CUP is a final decision of the Planning Commission. There's a 10-day period to appeal this decision to the city council. The appeal period begins tomorrow morning.
And before we move on to conditional use permit number 15-1, we will wait for Commissioner Machin to return. Speak of the devil.
I wonder if Taco Surf knows you're coming into their territory. There's going to be a, which one do we go to tonight?
The second public hearing item on tonight's agenda is conditional use permit 15-1. Could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chairman Sloan. Item three is at 1500 Pacific Coast Highway, units F and G. It's for conditional use permit 15-1 to permit an existing tattoo establishment to expand into unit G as well as remain in unit F. This site is located at the southeast corner of Pacific Coast Highway and 15th Street. The current establishment is located on the second floor in unit F and is requesting to expand into unit G. This unit was last occupied by Pacific Coast Hospitality that promoted the culinary industry. Their business license expired in June of 2014. The original tattoo establishment was conditionally approved in August of 2011. It still has the same owner, and the original conditions of approval have been incorporated into this resolution to ensure that the business continues to run the same way. As you can see here, unit F is located right here. It is an 858-square-foot unit. Where currently, they have four tattoo artists. You'll see that in the next floor plan. Adjacent to it is unit G, which is a little over 1,000 square feet. It's actually almost 1,100 square feet and adjacent to this establishment. As you can see here, this is the proposed new floor plan. You have the current four artists working in these four workstations with three additional in the new expansion. The current wall is located right along here, so a portion of it will be removed here. These walls currently right here, you'll see in a photo in a minute, are low walls. They're about 50 inches high so that you can see into the establishment. These walls right along here and right along here will also be these half-walls so that the artists can all see the entrance as people are coming in to the establishment, and people can see back in there. There's really not a lot of privacy. This is their clean room, where they clean all of their equipment. They will be adding a storage room back in this area, a new drawing area back behind these R4 walls, and a kitchen area back in this area. This will also become a drawing table so that they can greet people as they come in. As you can see currently, this is one of the 50-inch walls. Realistically, they're that size because of the drywall. It's easier just to put it up that way and put a cap on it. This is the wall where the half-walls will be located so that you can see in. You can see right there that you can see in. And this is looking from that area out. As you can see from back here, back in that hallway by the clean room, this is where these will be half-walls. This is the entrance. So, it just kind of gives you a perspective of how much you can see from that back room towards the front. Staff has received one letter of support and none of opposition. You should have that letter up on the dais with you. Police were contacted, and they have not received any calls of service to this location. I also contacted OC Health and spoke with the inspector who's been doing the inspections on this location. They were last inspected in July of 2014. And as of today, the site is in compliance with all regulations and all of their artists being registered with the county. At this time, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt resolution 15-6 to approve CUP 15-1 with conditions. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Did you say their permit had lapsed?
No.
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 Did I hear that? Okay. I thought, that's why I asked for a clarification.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if you can just clear your voting lights for this item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mine is not working, so I didn't notice.
I went to the facility today, and the owner, Tim Shelton, are you here? Wasn't there. Sorry, I missed you. And I was hoping to kind of get a better idea. I'm really terrible with a map, which is kind of odd, without seeing the location. So, I always go on-site. But your explanation really helped me out, so I feel much better now. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. You mentioned that there had been no police actions taken at the site. Has there been any complaints by the neighboring residents or businesses to the city or about this establishment?
None that the city has on record, no.
Okay. And the hours of operation that are contingent, this is contingent upon, are the same as they are today? Is that right? They're not being changed?
Actually, they're being a little bit, I think they're being a little bit less. And I think the original approval was from 10:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. Now, it's from 12:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Are there any changes to the signage being proposed?
No. There's no exterior changes to the building.
Okay. And you said that, did you say that site G next to them was occupied prior to this and vacated in 2014?
That is correct.
Did...
It was in June, maybe a little bit before. Their last business license expired in June of 2014.
And we have no idea why they left that building? Is that right?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. We'll open public testimony. Is the applicant here? And would they like to, would you like to say something, sir?
My name's Tim Shelton. I am the owner and tattooer as well at Still Life Tattoo. Been here in business a little over three years. I've been tattooing for a while, and I've just really been enjoying being close to home. My wife and I have lived here for, I'd say, just a little over 10 years now. And just we love being a part of the community and being able to help out with, you know, the different, you know, police foundations and just being able to give back and have a nice home location next to our home. Just hoping to basically just do a simple expansion, just to facilitate just a little bit more, a little more business and kind of enjoy the, our little bit of growth and enjoy Seal Beach a little bit more. And then our customers love it down here, so, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Any questions? Are you bringing in new artists?
Just a couple.
Just a couple.
Just to keep it very, very minimal and just because it's easier to manage, so, yeah.
So, how many artists do you have now?
There's four of us, so we're adding two.
Up to six or more, yeah.
And I think I noticed that parking isn't going to change. Nothing will change with parking. Do I remember reading that?
That is correct.
Are your employees, the artists, they licensed and regulated by the state?
Absolutely, by the Orange County Health Department.
Orange County Health Department? Okay, that's right. I read that.
They do very often check on that.
Sorry, what?
They check very often to make sure.
Okay. This is nothing to do with all of this, but what kind of training do you do? I mean, I've never been in one of these places, so I don't know. I don't know how long it takes to do a tattoo, what you charge. I don't know any of that. But you're here, so I'm curious.
Basically, it's just you go through a, it depends on every person. I went through a formal, after finishing art school, I did a formal apprenticeship with a man that had been tattooing for basically 15, 20 years. He took me under his wing and taught me all the, you know, the ins and outs of how to do things and how to take care of things properly. And then doing all that, you just, you kind of, you deal with the health department. You deal with things, being cleanly, and how to interact with everyone and just, it kind of just, you just keep doing that. Obviously, you have to know how to draw and you know how to, you know, tattoo. And it just, it comes with just, you know, building and just really trying to perfect the craft, pretty much.
I guess you have to have a knack for art to do this. It's just that it's, it's not my generational thing.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make a comment on this matter?
My name is Kevin Gaffney, 320 12th Street, 20 years in the city. I'm lucky enough to have met Tim and can call Tim a friend. And I think of the Seal Beach community we have here, I think about helping each other. I know that Tim and his wife Maggie, they spend a lot of time here. They eat here, they spend their money here, and they make their money here. So, I look at him and I see Maggie, I see this is what Seal Beach is. It's what we wanted to make Seal Beach for millions of, well, millions, as long as I've been in town. Family-oriented, bringing all the people here, tax dollars, yay, and making sure that we have a safe place to live. And that's what Tim is going to do for us if he has the chance to expand. It's the American dream. Have your own business and expand. And in a town called Mary Berry by the Sea, it doesn't get much better than that. So, I really hope that you approve his CUP. He can grow with the community and go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close public testimony on this matter. Does the commission have any comments? What, and what is your pleasure?
I move to approve.
Second.
Please vote. Five in favor. The, the motion is carried and the CUP is approved.
Approval of CUP fifteen dash one is a final decision of the planning commission. There's a ten-day period to appeal this to the city council. The appeal period begins tomorrow morning.
And that concludes public testimony items. Moving on to the director's report. Director, Mr. Director, do you have a report tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. And happy belated Easter to everyone. We do have something to report to you that's related to our infamous DWP project, Department of Water and Power project. If probably some may already know just by information from speaking with others in the community or attending the last city council meeting. The project was approved by the coastal commission on March 12th. That was a Thursday, late in the evening. Staff was there all day. And the coastal commission approved a project that comprises twenty-eight single-family lots with four of the remaining lots being deeded for the purpose of a visitor-serving commercial use or overnight accommodations. The park was approved, six point four acres, and that would be developed by the developer, improved if I was to say. So that was a milestone for us, a huge accomplishment. I've been here two and a half years and that's how long it's been for me to see and to attend as many meetings at the state level. So we're glad that that's basically completed. There's some refinement we need to do on the conditions. We'll work that through with the coastal commission staff. But otherwise, we can move forward now in regards to that project and look forward to the endeavor of it being implemented.
Congratulations, that's great.
Will we be involved in any way at this point forward? Or is this the part, the planning commission pretty much finished with this?
I couldn't comment on that. As the director pointed out, there are some details to be ironed out still with the addition of this, this late addition of visitor-serving uses and a reduction in number of lots. There may be a chance for further action by the planning commission depending on how that evolves, possibly revisiting the specific plan. But at this time, we really don't know exactly how or when that will come forward until we get a, a full final approval from the coastal commission. But in terms of the housing that has been approved, those, those, once, once everything else is cleared out of the way, those, that does not come back to the planning commission. And it seems unlikely to me that the park aspect would come back to the planning commission at this point because it's been properly zoned and the specific plan was amended, so that will just be developed, probably go through Parks and Rec and the council.
So the specific twenty-eight houses that were approved are not changing? Those sites are fixed?
Right. The coastal commission basically took four lots, is it, that were along Marina? And said, instead of houses, they want to see a visitor-serving use there of some sort. So all the other twenty-eight lots are exactly the same as they were approved by the council.
The visitor-serving uses, is that defined by the owner of the property, the owners of the property, does the council?
Ultimately, whoever develops the property will define what the use is, but it'll have to occur within the umbrella of some sort of visitor-serving use as defined by the coastal commission. And when we get the final written approval, we'll see how that adex plays out. Like, as, as the director said, this is still being tinkered with and refined through the coastal commission's interesting process.
So there will be a proposal and then the commission, the coastal commission will, will judge, judge that alteration. And we're still talking maybe a year or two as a result before they break ground.
I, I, I couldn't even begin to predict the timeline.
It's not tomorrow, though?
No.
That's for sure.
Okay.
I can begin to predict that far, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Director?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman. Unless there's something you have of me in inquiry.
Does the commission have any inquiries of the director?
I have one.
Do you have any?
Okay. Several months ago, we heard a request from a restaurant way down at the end of Seal Beach, right across the street from Huntington. They were having music and they were told they couldn't do it because their permit didn't allow that. And we heard this, their request, and we sent it on to the city council and asked that it be heard as quickly as possible because they're running out of money. And that nothing has happened yet, nothing's gone before the city council. What's holding this up?
Mr. Chairman, if I can address that question? That item will probably be presented to city council next month.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
A little internal housekeeping, Mr. Director. Since we don't always meet every time there's a, a possible scheduled meeting, is it possible to get an email or something to confirm? In this one case, we had one person that did not get a binder and didn't even know that there was a meeting until they got a phone call. I think we need to cover ourselves on this.
So staff will be contacting you on?
Thursday.
Wednesday? Through email to let you know that a packet was sent out or whether or not there will be a meeting that following Monday?
Okay.
Thanks.
Good, thank you.
It was really nice to get it early like this, those of us that got it.
Per your request.
We just got to find out where mine went. It went someplace, we just don't know where.
Really study it and, and have a chance to check the places out.
Does the commission have any other questions or comments or concerns other than the pier? Which is my favorite issue. Do we have a, do we have a date on when the pier, the end of the pier will be open?
No, sir.
The structural integrity of the pier has been verified and, or not?
It has been verified, yes. And there's ongoing discussions in closed session with city council at this time.
And we can expect to hear something, the city and, and the residents can expect to hear something soon?
I always think on the positive aspect of saying yes, soon.
You know, the pier is an icon of this city.
Absolutely.
And it has been closed, at least a portion of it has been closed for some time now.
It sure has.
And I think it shines poorly on this city's image. It'd be nice to get that resolved.
Rest assured, we're doing the best that we can.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned until Monday, April 20th. There's nothing currently scheduled, but we don't know for sure until the date rolls around. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.